Meeting of the City of Maple Heights, Ohio is being called to order on November 5th, 2025 at 7:07. Everyone please silence your cell phones. Demarcation and pledge by Councilwoman Dana Anderson, District 4.
Good Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together once again, Father. Lord, we give you honor and praise this evening. We thank you for your covering and your safety. We pray for all officials that run their race, God. We pray, Father Lord, that as we move forward, that we would do things decent and in order. We pray that your hand will be upon this meeting this evening, and we give you the glory and the honor and the praise. In your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which these hands, one nation, under God. To the government of America. Clerk call to roll, please.
Shemet.
Present.
Jones. President.
Tatum.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Madden.
Present.
Stafford-Monterey.
President.
Pagey.
Present.
Jackson.
Here. There's no addendum for tonight's meeting. You do have some minutes, may I have a motion to approve the October 1st, 2025 red alert meeting minutes?
So hold. Second.
Do you have any discussion? Clerk, please call to roll for approval.
Anderson.
Here. I mean, yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford-Monterey.
Yes.
Pagey.
Yes.
Shemet.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Pagey.
Yes. We have a motion to approve the October 15th, 2025 red alert meeting minutes of council.
So hold.
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Clerk, please call to roll for approval of the minutes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford-Monterey.
Yes.
Pagey.
Yes.
Shemet.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Pagey.
Yes. Thank you. Here, wait one second. Communications. No, communications, our council report, community report. Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have a presentation by Councilwoman Stafford-Monterey.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. This evening, I want to, for my presentation, or actually what I'm going to have is a point of privilege. There has been a lot of misinformation and deep untruths that has been floating around regarding council and the reasons that there's so much divisiveness. And I want to address that this evening, since all of the council is here at the table this evening, and residents are here present as well. There has been community meetings that have been held, and I want to talk about the untruths or embellishments or just issues that have been discussed at those meetings, since we're all here, councilors here. And I'm going to go through them as quickly as I can, so that I don't hold a lot of your time, but I'm sure that you may have questions, so get a lot of them as I go through. So, there were, there was a meeting held by, hosted, I believe, by my colleague, Councilwoman Tatum, Mayor D. Mayor, and my other colleague, Councilwoman Jones, were there along with some other people in the community. So, there were three different segments that I saw. And I'm going to go through those segments and talk about what the untruths were, so that we can get clarity, and hopefully in 2026, we can stop all of this bickering about who's telling the truth and who's not telling the truth, because we're all here. So, in the first segment, the part that I saw, at 1 minute and 2 seconds through 1 minute and 26 seconds into that meeting, the mayor was discussing how the council meetings is a business meeting, and it is our job to balance the budget. At 1 minute and 47 seconds into that meeting, she discussed how the residents have a very small portion of this very large agenda that we have at these meetings, because you all get 4 minutes to speak. It's been 3 minutes since, forever. It's been 3 minutes since she became mayor, 3 minutes since a lot of these councilors have been on council for 12 and more years. Councilwoman Dana Anderson increased it to 4 minutes. So, I feel like she should be getting credit for increasing your time to 4 minutes instead of the 3 minutes that it was, instead of being ridiculed that it was only 4 minutes. I mean, yeah, 24 minutes. At 2 minutes and 7 seconds.
Hold on, Councilwoman Stafford. You see, he's going to be giving a special presentation. It sounds more like a report from you. And this is our place on the agenda.
I'm doing a point of privilege.
You're going to have to hold this until it's your time, doing your council report to your business.
Counselwoman Pagey.
Counselwoman Stafford-Monterey is doing a point of privilege, and she has the right to do a point of privilege.
I want to ask for a direction from the law director. Yeah, so according to your rules, Council President, if you are the presiding officer, so it's going to have to be your decision, aren't they? Thank you. You're going to hold that until your, until your council report.
Then I appeal and ask for my colleagues to allow me to do my point of privilege now.
Again, I think the law director just ruled.
Now, I'm calling for council for a decision.
Well, I don't think it's up to council for a decision, from what I heard from my lawyer. He said, "This is my call."
Sir Attorney, if I'm wrong, are we able to do an amendment or a appeal?
Yeah, so, I understand your question, Councilwoman, so the, without being able to, first of all, I wish, when these things come up, guys, please give me a heads up, so I know this is going to come, so it's very hard to, if you're ruling, thanks, I'm trying to look at a phone last minute. But our rules say that the council president is the presiding officer, although it does make reference to Roberts Rules of Order, which I think is what you're using as your basis for point of privilege, although I haven't heard that. If there's a special section of Roberts Rule of Order you want to bring up, you're happy to do that. But from the information I have right here in this moment, this is a decision by the presiding officer of this meeting. So, and it won't be, it's not something that I believe can be overruled, the procedures, by council taking a vote, because that means you have to overrule the existing ordinance, which says he is the presiding officer, or she, whoever it may be, in future. So, for that reason, I respectfully would say you have to carry on with the council president's decision.
If you want to hear the truth, residents, please stay till the end of the meeting, so I can tell you what is.
He's going to, who are we? No, this is, um, citizens' hearing.
Lawrence names President of Maple. Miss Combs, semi-chunked, parked in drive home.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on.
The Director's Report.
I'm sorry. We go to Director's Reports first. Fire Department.
Good evening. Good evening. Good to see everybody today. Hope everybody's having a good fall so far. So, I will be very, very brief. So, for statistics, for the month of October, the Fire Department ran for emergency call services, 522. That brings our total calls for the by the end of September, correct? So, in October, again, for the year, at 5,494. During October, we had some presentations that we did for Fire Prevention Week at the elementary school over at the elementary, while well-received by the children, very excited as they are every year. On October the 14th, we had a civil service commission meeting with commissioners, so the Fire Department, we had discussed with them the status of our promotional process for the position of fire lieutenant. So, at that time, they had completed already the written portion of that process, and we had 8 personnel who were qualified for the assessment center of that process, which did take place on October the 20th. We have received scores from the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, who hosted the assessment center for us, and at the November meeting, a civil service will be bringing in those scores to compile all list, and I will have that available to you at that time. Other than that, at this time, our roster on the Fire Department is full, all the trucks are running, and we're winding down the year and getting ready for the next one. And that ends my report.
Any questions? Thank you. Law Department.
Attorney Frank Consolo. Good evening. So, I found an article that I wanted to share with you when I was researching, where I wanted to talk about. This actually came out yesterday in the Ohio Capital Journal, and it deals with domestic violence, which is an extremely important topic in our city, because unfortunately, it is one of the most common cases my prosecutors deal with here. So, I'm going to read from this, the Ohio Capital Journal for you. Domestic violence survivor, Brianna Nooks, remembers how her abuser wet with her to every doctor's appointment. That's her abusing. "When the nurse quietly asked me, 'Do you feel safe at home?'" "He was sitting right there beside me, the abuser was, watching to see what I would say," Nooks said during a recent press conference. "That day, I realized something. Silence was built into the system." She reached out to State Rep. Gerald's, a Democrat in Columbus, with a question, "What happens when the domestic violence survivor doesn't feel safe in a hospital?" That question led to Representative Gerald's and State Representative Williams, a Republican out of Sylvania, to introduce bipartisan legislation, which they have now called Break the Silence Act. This bill's still waiting to be assigned a number in committee. This is all just happening tomorrow. "This new act will build a consistent statewide standard, so every hospital and urgent care in Ohio knows how to respond when abuse walks through the door. It turns compassion into action through training, documentation, and clear procedures that ensure no survivor is left unseen or unheard." Mariah York, Policy Director of Ohio Domestic Violence Network, explained how Break the Silence Act would be implemented when a survivor shows up at a hospital. The care team takes private time with the patient, interviewing them separately from other family or household members, asking safety-focused questions and clearly documenting the injuries. If violence is disclosed or suspected, the healthcare professional offers supportive materials, makes a referral to a local program that can help with safety planning and resources. Strong partnerships with local domestic violence programs let care teams make warm handoffs, coordinate safety planning, and support survivors beyond discharge. So, the Break the Silence Act recognizes disparity and will take meaningful steps toward building a consistent statewide standard of response. Now, all of this is very, very important. So, domestic violence fatalities saw an increase this year in 2025. There were 157 intimate partner relationship fatalities in 108 cases from July 2024 to June 2025. That's from the Ohio Domestic Violence Network. Of this year's fatalities, 95 were victims, 62 were perpetrators. There were 82 male, 82 male fatalities, 75 female fatalities. So, the report showed 84% of all fatalities were a result of gun violence, 144 people were shot, in 108 cases, only 12 survived, and 56% of the primary victims killed were people of color. Intimate partner violence fatalities happened in 36 of our 88 counties in Ohio. Franklin County had the most, surprising, at 33, but followed behind by Coyote County with 20. And here in this city, unfortunately, we are still known throughout as the domestic violence capital of Hana County, which we're trying very hard through our prosecutors, through our victim advocates, for our police officers, who are the initial counselors and support people, but this goes beyond this. So, this now will take the actions that have been done and all the training through our police, our prosecutors, now it's mandating that the hospitals and their doctors take part in this. So, I think it was very important to bring that to your attention. It still hasn't gone anywhere yet, it's just recently been introduced, so let's pay attention to it. I'll end with two things for Veterans Day, because we want, Happy Veterans Day to those who served my father, was a veteran of World War II, believe it or not, and serving at 18 years old in 1945. And lastly, Maple plays St. Joe's, now I guess it's V.A. St. Joe.
V.A.S.J.
V.A.S.J. Bye, Alma Monterey, Billmore, on Saturday, or Friday, Friday night, Sunday. So, go out and support the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department, Liz Chief Todd Hanson.
Well, I'll jump in, I didn't know the law director was going to speak about that, but I can add on just a touch, which is related. I'm a member of a kind of a county, there's some judges, some prosecutors, and a couple law enforcement people, but prosecutor, defense attorneys, there's like a high-profile, high-risk domestic violence group that works to, the new strangulation law, and a number of things that have gone for, to reduce gun violence, and to work on some of the same problems that the legislation that the law director was discussing. So, I've been part of that group for like a year. As he said, we are known as the domestic violence capital of northeast Ohio. It's not a designation anybody wants, but we do have a lot of experience dealing with that compared to a number of other cities. So, it's good that we can be on a committee like that, to be at the forefront of trying to reduce the violence and to make sure that we keep all our residents safe. And as he pointed out, it is not just women. You know, 25 years ago, the majority that was reported was all women, but that has significantly changed over the years, and domestic violence is definitely goes both ways. It still affects more women than men, but the numbers are rising. So, that's excellent to see that there's bipartisan legislation going out at the state level as well, but we are doing many things at the local level too, and we're right at the forefront with it, so you can be proud of that, that we're trying to lead the charge. You know, our stats are pretty similar. We've had 27,000 calls for the year, and mostly other stuff's the same, four or five reports a day, in addition to the 85 or so calls. We took 12 guns off the street in October, and we had been writing a lot of parking tickets, 24 parking tickets a day, about, so probably some upset people. We got a lot of people coming into the station, wanting their tickets taken out. Rockside Road, are we happy? Yeah, nice, it's not quite completely done, but it's open, and I'm trying to get it moving, and that's great, it's nice and smooth. And then, obviously, out front here, I think we only have roughly, depending on the weather, I think we have like about 3 weeks left of this, at least for the winter, and then it will be, there will be some construction, spring on it again at Lee and Libby, just to finish off some of the stuff that they weren't able to finish this year, but I think, I think we're going to have this tied up within a month, at least, and we'll be good for the winter. And then, a couple of last things, law director mentioned Veterans Day. We will be having a Veterans Day ceremony like we do at the memorial in front of City Hall, that is on Tuesday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock. Get there like 10:45, we'll start the ceremony at 11. That'll be put on by the American Legion and Commander Blanche, with our assistance at the police departments and city officials. Two police things that are coming up, Wednesday, November 19th, our annual mocktail event, that is in association with University Hospital, Rainbow Baby Children's Hospital, and they get together, it's a bunch of police departments and organizations get together, we create, you know, fake drinks, and there's giveaways, and it's at the IHX Center, you can see it online with UH, there's, should be some information on the website coming up too, I'll put it on our Facebook page, but you can buy tickets to it, there's silent auctions, there's raffles, it's a good time for a good cause. All the money goes to fund traffic enforcement throughout the year, to cut down on drunk driving and things like that, and to keep the children safe. So, it's a really great event, fun time, Wednesday, November 19th, usually from 5:30 to 8:00. And last but not least, coming up, Saturday, December 13th, where we shop with a cop, and I just mentioned that now, so I will have tickets shortly, and we'll be able to buy tickets, they're always $1 apiece, or $6 for $5, and we use that money to take children shopping every year, and we have a little pizza party with them, it's a great time, so that'll be coming up next month, December 13th. So, other than that, I appreciate your time, have a good night.
Thank you. Human Services Department Director Hazenow.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In light of the government shutdown and disruption of the SNAP benefits, I just wanted to kind of reiterate and remind everyone about our food pantry. It is open, you know, weekly, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This week, with donation from University Hospital, we have bags for, with the Thanksgiving fixings, along with a gift card for Giant Eagle that people will get if they're visiting. Next week, we will have bags from Save-A-Lot with fixings, and then we have turkeys at the pantry that'll be going out. And then, on Tuesday, November 18th, at Stafford Park, we will be giving away 300 turkeys with UH, their workers will be there, we'll be there. Just asking you to try to come in on the Auburn Cottage side. We're going to have two different times, just to try to alleviate time, we'll do 150 section, and we are asking for proof of residency for that, so a photo ID along with proof of residency. So, hopefully, I mean, that's about 400 turkeys, and things we'll be able to give away, hopefully for the holiday. Produce Pantries as well, ours is November 20th at St. Andrews. We had about, almost 30 more people come in October, so, you know, we are expecting a big crowd. There are produce pantries all around. South Point Hospital does theirs, they'll have one this Friday from 9 to 11, so they do the first and third Fridays. Marymont Hospital will do theirs on the 26th from noon to 2:00. The Greater Cleveland Food Bank, and I've got it, it's on the website, it's on social media, it is, they have a QR code, so these are on the back table, it has everything. If you can scan it, you can put in a zip code, you can find pantries, produce pantries, it has their resource center, if you need assistance with SNAP, Medicaid, anything like that, I mean, this is a good sheet to use, and it'll, you'll be able to get in touch with someone and at least locate, to get some help. Also, if, you know, for those that are fortunate and can, we do, we always take donations for the food pantry, we can take monetary, we can take in kind, cases of water, protein, we do have that on our Facebook page, so if anyone's able to and interested, you know, that'd be great, so you can, you can call me if you have any questions on that. Next, we have, also, like that Ian said, Meals. We had, our senior program's been around forever, if you're 60-plus, we have Neighbors, encourage them to come in, it's a free hot lunch, Monday through Friday. We've had seven new registrations between home-delivered and congregates, people, a couple walked in today, boom, we were able to register them and feed them. So, if you know anybody that's able to access and come in, or again, home-delivered Meals, give us a call, so that's, that's here. Also, Utility Resource Fair is, we had, there is one on Saturday, November 15th, at the Tri-C East Campus, from 9 to 12:00. You do have to pre-register for that, there's a phone number. If, again, utility shut-offs, if you need a pit pre-verification, water, sewer, this is the best way to, to get everything taken care of, you're dealing with people in person, and that's really the best way to handle it. Phone numbers, you're on hold, you can't get ahold of anybody, so be, know again, if you have residents or anybody that needs assistance, Saturday, November 15th, flyers also on the table. So, make sure you check out that table, because there's lots of good things there. I know Diva Walker brought a bunch more things, so lots of things to look at that are there for assistance. Medicare Open Enrollment, I just want to stress, if you have a Medicare Advantage plan with Anthem, they have cut two of their programs, they're changing with what they're, with who they're serving and the type, so make sure if you have Anthem, you read your 2026 letter, and know if you're going to be losing that insurance, if you need to switch, you can call me and set up an appointment. I have seen a few more people this year having to help them switch plans and things like that, so just make sure it's not something you just toss aside, make sure you read if you're a Medicare Advantage Anthem person. And then, some good news, we were approached by Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners and Kind of County Soil and Water Conservation District, it was a quick turnaround, they called us in September to get a little grant money, they wanted to try and put a pollinator garden in our community garden in the spring, and we're happy to say they got it. So, for $1,000, we're going to partner with them in the springtime, we also been in touch with Riddall and looking for local volunteers, and we're going to be working to put a pollinator garden in our community garden, so hopefully we can build that a little bit and get more interest in it, so that's exciting. Youth Activities, we have on Tuesday, November 25th, at The Lanes, we're offering a free bowling night from 4:30 to 6:30. I want to thank Councilman Tim Tatum for sponsoring that event for us, and also to Joe Flouche at The Lanes, who's helping us to make it work, so we appreciate that. We've got already 20, it's limited number, we already got about 20 kids signed up, and it's only been a week, so join us for that. Last month, the inaugural Fathers Club meeting took place in Maple Heights, there were over 10 fathers and their children in attendance. Mr. Al Grimes from the Fatherhood Initiative had helped facilitate the conversation, and gave a lot of insight and ideas on how to sustain and grow the program. Brandon Beck has created a Small Fathers Committee from that group, and they are planning and coordinating activities for future discussions, so they're looking, they're going to be held the next one, second or third Thursday, every other month, so we'll get you the date on the December 1, but a really good start for a, for a new initiative. Also, in the works, just more details, we come in, Brandon's working on bringing a chess club and a youth cooking class, so we'll get further details for that. Just a quick thank you, our seniors come in daily, the coffee, sugar, a lot of times they donate their own, they bring it in, they drink it, so we did get a, get a run on, there was a request for some flavored creamers, it went out, and we had a lot of people bringing in creamer, flavored creamers, so thank you to, to the mayor for getting that out there, and to some of our employees, old retired employees. So, anyways, they were very happy, we had a ton of flavored creamers, so thank you very much for that, they're, they're very, very much appreciative. And, just a note, light bulbs, I left it over there, we were still giving away the NotePad light bulbs, still have a couple more left, if you have not received them, see me after the meeting, that was a 12-watt, which is the equivalent of a 60-watt old light bulb. And then, in veterans, also just wanted to acknowledge, as we honor Veterans Day of November 11th, just extend the gratitude to all who have served and thanked them for their dedication and for their community spirit. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Director, do we still have a Nut Drive coming through the senior center?
Yes. Yes, Peterson Nut Drive is actually our advisory site council does that every year, again, flyers are in the newsletter, we have some, so yes, that is for the site council.
Roxanne Road. Are we happy? Yeah, nice, right? It's not quite completely done, but it's open and I'm trying to get it moving. That's great. It's nice and smooth. And then, obviously, out front here, I think we only have roughly, depending on the weather, I think we have like about three weeks left of this, at least for the winter. And then it will be a construction, there will be some construction in the spring on it again at Lee and Libby, just to finish off some of the stuff that they weren't able to finish this year. But I think, I think we're gonna have this tied up within a month, at least, and we'll be good for the winter. And then a couple of last things. Law Director mentioned Veterans Day. We will be having a Veterans Day ceremony like we do at the Memorial in front of City Hall. It is on Tuesday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock. Get there like 10:45. We'll start the ceremony at 11. That'll be put on by the American Legion and Commander Blanche, with our assistance at the police departments and city officials. Two police things that are coming up. Wednesday, November 19th, our annual mocktail event. That is in association with University Hospital, Rainbow Baby Children's Hospital. And they get together, it's a bunch of police departments and organizations get together. We create, you know, fake drinks and there's giveaways. And it's at the IHX Center. You can see it online with UH. There's, should be some information on the website coming up too. I'll put it on our Facebook page. But you can buy tickets to it. There's silent auctions, there's raffles. It's a good time for a good cause. All the money goes to fund traffic enforcement throughout the year, to cut down on drunk driving and things like that, and to keep the children safe. So it's a really great event, fun time. Wednesday, November 19th, usually from 5:30 to 8. And last but not least, coming up, Saturday, December 13th, where we shop with a cop. And I just mentioned that now, so I will have tickets shortly. And we'll be able to buy tickets. They're always a dollar a piece, or six for five dollars. And we use that money to take children shopping every year. And we have a little beach party with them. It's a great time. So that'll be coming up next month, December 13th. So, other than that, I appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Human Services Department Director Hazenow.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In light of the government shutdown and disruption of the SNAP benefits, I just wanted to kind of reiterate and remind everyone about our food pantry. It is open, you know, weekly, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This week, with donation from University Hospital, we have bags for, with the Thanksgiving fixings, along with a gift card for Giant Eagle that people will get if they're visiting. Next week, we will have bags from Save-A-Lot with fixings. And then we have turkeys at the pantry that'll be going out. And then on Tuesday, November 18th, at Stafford Park, we will be giving away 300 turkeys with UH. Their workers will be there, we'll be there. Just asking you to try to come in on the Auburn Cottage side. We're gonna have two different times, just to try to alleviate time. We'll do 150 section. And we are asking for proof of residency for that, so a photo ID along with proof of residency. So hopefully, I mean, that's about 400 turkeys, and things we'll be able to give away, hopefully, for the holiday. Produce Pantries as well. Ours is November 20th at St. Andrews. We had about, almost 30 more people come in October. So, you know, we are expecting a big crowd. There are produce pantries all around. South Point Hospital does theirs. They'll have one this Friday from 9 to 11. So they do the first and third Fridays. Marymont Hospital will do theirs on the 26th from noon to 2. The Greater Cleveland Food Bank, and I've got it, it's on the website, it's on social media. It is, they have a QR code, so these are on the back table. It has everything. If you can scan it, you can put in a zip code, you can find pantries, produce pantries. It has their resource center. If you need assistance with SNAP, Medicaid, anything like that. I mean, this is a good sheet to use, and it'll, you'll be able to get in touch with someone and at least locate, to get some help. Also, if, you know, for those that are fortunate and can, we do, we always take donations for the food pantry. We can take monetary, we can take in kind, cases of water, protein. We do have that on our Facebook page, so if anyone's able to and interested, you know, that'd be great. So you can, you can call me if you have any questions on that. Next, we have, also, like that Ian said, Meals. We have, our senior program's been around forever. If you're 60-plus, we have Neighbors. Encourage them to come in. It's a free hot lunch, Monday through Friday. We've had seven new registrations between home-delivered and congregations. People, a couple walked in today, boom, we were able to register them and feed them. So if you know anybody that's able to access and come in, or again, home-delivered meals, give us a call. So, that's, that's here. Also, Utility Resource Fair is, we have, there is one on Saturday, November 15th, at the Tri-C East Campus, from 9 to 12. You do have to pre-register for that. There's a phone number. If, again, utility shut-offs, if you need a pit reverification, water, sewer, this is the best way to, to get everything taken care of. You're dealing with people in, in person, and that's really the best way to handle it. Phone numbers, you're on hold, you can't get ahold of anybody. So be, know again, if you have residents or anybody that needs assistance, Saturday, November 15th, flyers also on the table. So make sure you check out that table, because there's lots of good things there. I know Diva Walker brought a bunch more things. So lots of things to, to look at that are there for assistance. Medicare Open Enrollment. I just want to stress, if you have a Medicare Advantage plan with Anthem, they have cut two of their programs. They're changing with what they're, with who they're serving and the type. So make sure, if you have Anthem, you read your 2026 letter, and know if you're gonna be losing that insurance, you need to switch. You can call me and set up an appointment. I have seen a few more people this year having to help them switch plans and things like that. So just make sure it's not something you just toss aside. Make sure you read if you're a Medicare Advantage Anthem person. And then some good news. We were approached by Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners and County Soil and Water Conservation District. It was a quick turnaround. They called us in September to get a little grant money. They wanted to try and put a pollinator garden in our community garden in the spring. And we're happy to say they got it. So for $1,000, we're gonna partner with them in the springtime. We also been in touch with Riddall and looking for local volunteers. And we're gonna be working to put a pollinator garden in our community garden. So hopefully, we can build that a little bit and get more interest in it. So, that's exciting. Youth Activities. We have on Tuesday, November 25th, at The Lanes. We're offering a free bowling night from 4:30 to 6:30. I want to thank Councilman Tim Tatum for sponsoring that event for us. And also to Joe Flouche at The Lanes, who's helping us to make, make it work. So we appreciate that. We've got already 20. It's limited number. We already got about 20 kids signed up, and it's, it's only been a week, so join us for that. Last month, the inaugural Fathers Club meeting took place in Maple Heights. There were over 10 fathers and their children in attendance. Mr. Al Grimes from the Fatherhood Initiative had helped facilitate the conversation and gave a lot of insight and ideas on how to sustain and grow the program. Brandon Beck has created a small Fathers Committee from that group, and they are planning and coordinating activities for future discussions. So they're looking, they're gonna be held the next one, second or third Thursday, every other month. So we'll get you the date on the December one. But a really good start for a, for a new initiative. Also, in the works, just more details to be coming. Brandon's working on bringing a chess club and a youth cooking class. So we'll get further details for that. Just a quick thank you. Our seniors come in daily. The coffee, sugar, a lot of times, they donate their own. They bring it in, they drink it. So we did get a, get a run on, there was a request for some flavored creamers. It went out, and we had a lot of people bringing in creamer, flavored creamers. So thank you to, to the mayor for getting that out there, and to some of our employees, old retired employees. So anyways, they were very happy. We had a ton of flavored creamers. So thank you very much for that. They're, they're very, very much appreciative. And, just a note, light bulbs. I left it over there. We were still giving away the Notepad light bulbs. Still have a couple more left. If you have not received them, see me after the meeting. That was a 12-watt, which would be equivalent of a 60-watt old light bulb. And then, veterans, also, just wanted to acknowledge, as we honor Veterans Day of November 11th, just extend the gratitude to all who have served and thanked them for their dedication and for their community spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Director, do we still have a Nut Drive coming through the Senior Center?
Yes, yes. Peterson Nut Drive is actually our advisory site council does that every year. Again, flyers are in the newsletter. We have some. So yes, that is for the site council, and that ends at the end of the month.
Council President.
Councilwoman Agee.
Can you also, because I didn't hear you say anything about our programs giveaway that we give myself and the council members that we do every month. But ours is going to be November the 24th. So please let the residents know, and 5 o'clock is at South Gate.
November 24th at 5 o'clock. Okay?
Anyone? Thank you. Finance Department. Mr. Kennedy.
Hello, guys. Good evening. Just wanted to give you a little update. I've been here about a little over two weeks. And I want to tell you what we're focused on in finance. Right now, I'm just trying to get everybody caught up in all the reconciliations that need to be done. The last time the city was fully reconciled was the end of July. I think by the end of this week, we'll have August on. And then probably both September and October done within the next two weeks after that. I've had a lot of conversations with both the city auditor, that's Charles Harris and Associates, and some representatives from the Otter State, just to get a handle on things, how things are lined up, how things are accounted for. It's a little different than what I'm used to. I probably will come back to you with some recommendations on what we could do to maybe streamline some of the recording, make it a little more easy to read, and to make comparisons of prior years. As I think I told you when I came here for the introduction, familiar with the accounting software that the city uses. There's a module within that software that was not being used, it's already paid for, that will very greatly help budget preparation, both at the department level, at the mayor's level, and once it goes to council, any changes that come through there, they can be processed very seamlessly and without a lot of risk or error. So I hope to be using that as part of the budget. I'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks, once we get caught up. We're, we're looking at a couple of other things to do in terms of trying to change some of the way the charge of accounts flows, talk to the Otters about some of those items. And also, we've had a couple of discussions with the Law Director and the mayor about some things that I think we'll probably sit down and talk about, to see if we can make some changes to kind of improve the basis of financial reporting through the city. I can give you a couple of numbers here. These are all subject to change, obviously, because we're not fully reconciled. As of the end of October, there was an ending balance in the general fund that's taking account for all the encumbrances that are still open. Another thing, we'll go through those by the end of the year to close what's not necessary, which helps your general fund balance. But the general fund balance at the end of October, $3,893,728. When you take into account all the funds, the ending balance with it, with consideration for the encumbrances, is $13,227,130. So I hope to get out by the next meeting, an updated series of reports. I know you're used to seeing those on a regular basis. I think, based on what I've dealt out in the past, I can give you something a little more detailed, that's easier to follow. But, you know, once you do get those, please contact me and let me know what you'd like to see different, better. If something's too much, too little, be happy to take that into account when we're producing that information. So be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I've been here a little over two weeks. So, still learning a lot of things, but everybody's been great. Finance folks have been spectacular, so I would like to thank them as well.
Councilman Shannett.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We're hoping that we can have a finance meeting, hopefully, before the end of the month. I know that we, you know, been waiting and saying that we would, you know, give you an opportunity to do what you need to do to understand the books, for lack of a better word. So, we're here for the finance committee. Hopefully, we can meet before the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you, thank you.
Service Department.
Director Cerisi, the Snap. Here, here you have a question for you.
Go to Planning Development. Yes. We go to Planning Development Director Inglebry.
Good evening. Reports for the last two weeks in regards to Planning and Development. With the Housing Department, the Housing Department has recently hired and has a new housing administrator named Anaya Perrin. She started on Monday. She's been doing great so far, helping out Ashley and the department. So it's a new hire within, within the department. Things begin to slow down this time of year, when it comes to permits and complaints as well. Even though that happens, the department stays busy. They'll be doing training within the department when it comes to the International Property Maintenance Code, reviewing videos and getting certified. And they'll be doing that this month, talking about the code compliance inspectors. When it comes to community development, Small Business Saturday is coming up. Small Business Saturday is November 29th. And I've been having our, our Community Development Manager work with our Communications Director in creating short videos of small businesses within the city. So we'll have eight videos posted throughout the month on the city's, on the city's sites such as LinkedIn and Facebook and Instagram. You'll be able to see some of the businesses highlighted, which include DNA Boxing over on South Gate. We'll be interviewing the Suburban Tech Clinic. We'll be interviewing both businesses on the east and the west side of the city. So just stay tuned to the city's websites, and you'll be able to see. In regards to the Planning and Development Department Director, it's not too early to let this one out. He is on the agenda for next month. I've been working with Ishmael Martin since the beginning of the year in regards to a potential project in the city. He's gonna be looking at building a 27-unit apartment building on Graeter in Tim Tatum's Ward, across the street from Peace. This is a big deal. This is gonna be the city's first TOD, transitorian development, that's been in place for a long time. So we're looking forward to that. If you're interested, please come to the PNC meeting. His, his architect will be there, along with himself. I'll be there. Along with potentially somebody from the county planning committee to, to push forward the mindset of TOD, what it is and how it's important to cities like Maple Heights. You know, Mr. Martin's been in the news a lot, and I'm glad that this is gonna be one of his showpiece projects within the region. And with that, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Go back to the Service Department report.
Council President. Mr. Inglebry, meaning we were at this morning, First Suburbs Consortium. Can you just talk about the tax payment amnesty program? Can you share that information?
Yes, that is, that's something that came up today. So the First Suburbs Consortium is a group of the first suburbs, all the suburbs that touch Cleveland. We meet periodically, and today, one of the things that came up was the, a decision by the county to hold off on the tax sales, which were going to be scheduled this month. They will be sending out notice to everybody who was scheduled to have their taxes sold. That gives people the opportunity, if your taxes are behind and you didn't get in a payment plan, to set up a payment plan with the county. If your taxes are behind and you don't have a payment plan in place, the county can sell your taxes to an out-of-state investor. That out-of-state investor can charge 18% interest per month, allowed by law, on the amount that they purchased your taxes for. So say, for example, you're $10,000 behind, and they purchased the entire $10,000. You'll never get caught up. You'll never get caught up, because that 18% compounded per month adds up very, very quickly. So if you're behind in your taxes, please get in touch with the county, go downtown, get on the payment plan. It's the best thing that you can do to save your property from potential tax sale. And, and what happens is the company, whoever the out-of-state investor is, once they purchase your property taxes, they have the ability to charge that interest. And then after a year, they can foreclose on that tax certificate lien, and then you lose your house. Nobody wants that for you. Please, 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 get on the payment plan if you're behind. That's all.
Councilor Inglebry, another part. I'll share that. So if you, that's for if your house is, your property taxes are delinquent. However, if you're on a payment plan, until, as long as the federal government's on shutdown, they will suspend your payment plan. It's like an amnesty program. So there's, there's two parts of this. I'll let you take it from there.
Yes.
Explain both parts, please.
Yes, that, the second part, like the mayor explained, so long as, so long as the government is on shutdown and you've been affected, and you're on a payment plan, they will waive the, or the payment for the month. You have to have been affected. They said that you call them, let them know, get in touch with them, so that they know that, you know, if you're one of the people that's been affected by the shutdown, that they can waive this current month, that they're not gonna charge you for the month. At least, that was, that was the instructions that we were given today by the county.
Ladies? Thank you. You go back to the Service Report.
Good evening. Thank you. That document, we did receive from the county official document regarding amnesty program for those who are in a payment plan. They will waive it for that month. It was posted this afternoon, so it's on the city's social media. And we, we have a new website rolling out in January. So right now, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, we post every single day. So anything they want are on those social media sites. Our Service Director was not feeling well today, so he did send me his report regarding this recent election and the campaign yard signs. Our residents are reminded that campaign yard signs and their metal stands are not recyclable. So you can't put them at the curb side. Don't put them in any curb-side recycling bins. They won't take them. Instead, drop them off at the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District, which is located at 4750 East 131st Street in Garfield Heights. The drop-off hours are Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30. Again, those are not recyclable, so please, I'll make sure this is. I did have this also added to the website, if you want to share this information. Leaf pickup update. Many of you have had some leaves picked up. Other service departments is reporting that one full round of leaf collection is done, and they're currently halfway through their second round. Leaf pickup will continue, as it always does, until snowfall or the latest is second week of December. Important reminder regarding, please rake the leaves to the curb. Do not put them in the street. That blocks up the sewer. And then we have backup. Please do not put the leaves, rake the leaves on the curb and end up there in the street. It's, it's also very dangerous, a safety hazard for drivers. And as we know, it causes street flooding, blocking up our sewers. The Service Department will only collect leaves, no trees, no branches, only leaves. So do not mix in grass clippings, any branches, as I said, or gravel, because it damages the equipment. We just got this new leaf machine like two years ago, and it was quite expensive. So please don't mix those in the leaves, the leaves that you push to the curb to be picked up. There is a leaf collection hotline, 587-9015. Again, you can find them on the city's Facebook page. Regarding street light maintenance, as many of you may recall, we do have an agreement with First Energy. Any light that goes out upon replacement gets replaced with the new LED lighting, which is a nice, bright white lighting that has significantly more lumen than the yellow-hued lights. If you see a light that's out, please report it to the city. And there's also a place on the city's website, and it'll say, on the Service Department tab, and it says First Energy Lights, and you can put the address or nearby address. And if you know the pole number, which is right on the pole, or the nearest intersection, just gives as much information as you can give if you see a street light that's out. Christmas lighting, our annual Christmas lighting ceremony is on schedule for December the 6th. You may have seen the Service Department's already putting up the decorations and lights in preparation for the event. Again, that is on December the 6th. I won't have to talk about the traffic alert, because Chief Henson, you talked about the traffic alert regarding Libby Road. And with that, is the end of Director Cerisi's Service Department's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now turning to public comments, citizens' comments. First, we have.
Long Smees, you wanted to speak about the semi-truck parked in the driveway.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just want, I have a question for Councilor Deage, from my district. It's a property located on my street of 5334 Ellwood. Every other weekend, it's a semi-truck parked in the driveway. And now, I was there today as well, on the weekday. I thought, I don't know if it's, we're allowed, they're allowed to do it, but I know the neighbor next door's been complaining, and they called the police. I called the police. So I just don't know exactly. Are they all right? Are you allowed to park the trucks in the driveway? I was asking a question, so.
I'm waiting.
Oh, I'm done.
You're done.
Council President.
Councilwoman Agee.
Mr. Smees.
Yes.
I have been over there several times. And a young man told me that he had already spoke to the police, and the police told him, he can keep his, you know, it's not the whole truck, it's just that.
Just the motor.
Yes.
The cab.
Truck, trailer.
Yes, yeah. And so he said he talked to the police. Chief, can you elaborate on that?
I cannot elaborate on the conversation I had with my officer. But I can tell you that he's not allowed to park any part of his semi, of his residential property. So I will make sure that officer goes over there and talks to him.
30, this is 5334.
Right about here.
Thank you for that information.
My bad. Thank you.
Next?
Next is Diva Walker.
Walker.
Walker. She wanted to speak about the CCPL Maple Heights branch, and with the laser for residents.
Chair. Chair.
Council, Councilman Shannett.
It's quite a way. Dude, I don't know if we made a decision, just give more time.
I sent an email, yes, I did.
Were you good with that, Council President?
I didn't see.
Were you to see the email?
Depending on what time you sent it.
I didn't send it.
I sent.
I didn't see the email, so what was email?
The email, I sent email to you and to Pro Tem, asking that Ms. Walker have extended time, because she has information for the residents regarding the shutdown, the government shutdown. She has more information, and she wanted to have more time. So I did send an email to you and the Pro Tem. And the Pro Tem, I asked him, he said he did receive it, so I don't know why he did not receive it. Thank you.
Ms. Walker, continue.
So, my name is Diva Walker, and I'm the branch manager over at the Maple Heights branch. I did want to give extra information because of the government shutdown. Because of the shutdown, we have a lot of residents that are coming more to the library, because a lot of the government agencies are telling them to come to the library to get a lot of things done, because they're unable to do them. So I wanted to pass on a lot of different information, and I'm also thankful for other people here that have already spoken, because I also wanted to add on the fact that I already put in the back about the Cuyahoga County Treasurer's Office. So it has their telephone number and their email. Once you get all of the documents that you need to actually send them, we do have a way for you guys to send them at the library. So you can email it, even if you don't have an email address yourself. We have a way for you to email stuff, and also fax. also fax stuff, but for them, it's an email, and they also have their telephone number on the sheet of paper, and that's in the back. Um, also, thank you to Jamie, because we spoke earlier. So I have extra things about food distribution, and also I'm asking if council has any areas that are in their districts, if you guys could send them to us, because we have a lot of people coming into the library asking about food. Um, so we also have the library's different food distribution sheets that are in the back, and I just wanted to remind everybody that you can go to every single one of the food distributions regardless of which library it's at. So if you go to every single library the whole month, you can get food from all those different locations. Um, I also in the back put a thing about Thanksgiving meals. It's a whole packet of where you can get different meals for free, um, in the Cuyahoga County area that's close to this area. Um, the thing is, we also have different groups that come into the library that actually help out residents. So for example, on Monday, we actually have a representative of Cleveland Food Bank, so they can actually answer some of your SNAP questions, um, because you may or may not get through to various people, um, just in general, but they will answer questions. We also have Care Source that's coming in on the 18th. They actually will actually help answer questions about Medicaid. So if you need more information for that type of stuff, those types of representatives will be in here, and that is on the sheet that actually talks about adult events on the back table. Um, also, I will be emailing this all to council, so if you guys want to send it out to residents, um, you can send it out to residents also. So for a lot of these things, you also have to fax a lot of your information to some of the sources. Sometimes their faxes are not working, so sometimes you might have to do it multiple times because it depends on what's going on on their end. Um, faxing at the library is free, so you don't have to go someplace else and pay for your faxing, you can just come to the library and do all your faxing for free. The other things that I wanted to talk about real quick is the fact that, um, a lot of the childcare benefits with a lot of the new rules have changed. So if people are trying to get childcare benefits, please pay attention. I have sheets on the back, that is a new change that has happened within really the last few months here. Um, the other thing is, one of the other offices that is sending a lot of people over to the library is the Social Security Department, um, because if you want to get a replacement of your Medicare card, um, or if you want to issue a proof of income letter, letter which you actually need for a lot of other services, or if you need to update or correct your earnings record, they are not assisting you with those right now. Um, so they're sending almost everybody to the library for that assistance. Um, we will try to help you as much as we possibly can. Um, with that, I do want to say that, um, we will help you create an email if you don't have an email. However, we need people to, if they have an email already, we need you to know your password. Um, there's not much we can do to help you if you don't know your passwords. Um, we also need you to bring your phone, um, because a lot of stuff has dual authentication now, so you have to bring your phone, email address, you have to know your Social Security number, um, and if you have your login.gov information, you really need to bring all that information with you. Um, we are helping people with getting those forms filled out and doing everything online. So if you do need help with the Social Security site, just let us know, we do, are assisting everybody on that. Um, and also Jimmy had mentioned the utility assistance resource there. Um, the other thing about this is that if you need help printing off, only have this information, um, we will help you with that at the library, um, because people have to print off their pay stubs and have their pay stubs, people need to have their information for a lot of, um, just their incomes, their electric bills, their gas bills, a lot of that stuff is also online. So we will actually help you at the library to make sure you have all of this information. So I wanted to just make sure that people know that we will help people with all the stuff that's shut down with the government right now. And, um, we also say that if you have a, have no experience with computer, we do ask if you can bring somebody else also to help you, because right now we have a lot of people that were assisting, so we just ask that you also bring somebody else if you have no experience using a computer at all. Because the way that some of the sites are set up, it can take anywhere from an hour to two hours to get some of the stuff completed. So we will work with you, um, and we will work with a lot of different people, so just let us know what type of help and assistance that you need.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Council President.
Councilwoman Stafford Marbury.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of the resources that you have available for the residents, um, this time during this shutdown and even prior to, that, you know, the library staff is there and, you know, so dedicated to helping the residents. It's really a great resource, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Turning to legislation. Ordinance number 2025 dash 76.
An ordinance amending section 240.05 of the codified ordinances of the city of Maple Heights, requiring council approval for all city monies expended for the refurbishing of the city buildings, offices, and for the purchase of office furniture, decorations, amenities, regardless of the amount of such expense, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is on its third reading, but may I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass this first ordinance on emergency? Do I, do I?
It's not a use of third reading.
It is on third reading.
So it's not.
Council President. Returning Consultant.
Yeah, so, uh, it does have the emergency clause, and it still would need two votes. The first one would be to suspend the rules, right? Because it says we need three readings, however, if you want it to take effect immediately, then you have to suspend the rule and pass on emergency. If it's not passed on emergency, and it does pass with four more votes, it won't take effect until 30 days. That's the difference, that's the reason. Okay?
So now that we have clarification, can we go back to where I once started? May I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on emergency?
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role to suspend the rules.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Tatum?
No.
Miss Scotty, too. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role for passage on emergency.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Tatum.
No.
Passes five to two.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-76 passed five to two.
On emergency.
On emergency.
Resolution number 2025 dash 86.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various components codes of the codified ordinances, which is to approve, adopt, enact, and publish new matter in the updated revised codified ordinances, and to repeal ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith. This resolution is on the second reading.
Resolution number 2025 dash 88.
Resolution authorizing the mayor, Director of Planning and Development and Housing Administrator, to make application to Cuyahoga County Department of Development, Community Development Supplemental Grant Program for 2026, and authorizing the signing of contracts and other documents relevant thereto, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is on its first reading, but may I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass this resolution on emergency?
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role to suspend the rules.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tatum.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role for passage on emergency.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tatum.
Yes.
This resolution 2025 idiot passes and on emergency.
Ordinance number 2025 dash 89.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cuyahoga County for the rehabilitation of the Kraken Road Bridge 0.136 over Mill Creek in the cities of Maple Heights and Maple Heights, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is on its first reading, but may I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on emergency?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role to suspend the rules.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tatum.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none with a clerk called a role for passage on emergency.
Anderson.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Stafford Marbury.
Yes.
A.G.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tatum.
Yes.
This passes on emergency seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2025 dash 90.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional service municipal engineering consulting contract with engineer Matthew M. Jones, assistant engineer Edward Renn, and Jane Shay, and their engineering firm, Grand Valley Engineering, effective January 1st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is on its first reading. Ordinance number 2025 dash 91.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept and enter into a restricted order form and one-year service agreement from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026, with online solutions LLC, which is CitizenServe, for elevating users to access and use CitizenServe software in the building department, including setup, training, implementation, and data migration, a total cost of $27,299.98, with an annual service fee of $19,800 thereafter, and to accept a grant from the First Suburb Consortium in the amount of $27,299.98 to cover the cost of the first year of the service agreement, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance is on its first reading. And that's our legislation for tonight. Turn into finance and expenditures, there's one, expenditure over $10,000. Turn into the mayor's report, Mayor Ned Blackwell.
Good evening again. I do want to just reiterate, the Father's Club was born out of the various high-profile issues, story, news stories, not issues, but news stories we've had regarding youth and, um, separate from the domestic violence, but just the violence that we are experiencing here in Maple Heights, and just a call to action. Um, we had some strategy meetings, thank you Chief Hansen, and Executive Lieutenant Brandon Kevren, uh, Diva Walker from the library, our, uh, Youth Services Program Manager, Brandon Beck, um, and Paquita Hansberry, Assistant Human Services Director, of what we could do. And one of the things that, um, I was a benefactor of growing up in Cleveland was a Father's Club that I went to with my dad. So we thought we'd try that here, and I am pleased to say it, our first meeting was excellent. Uh, thank you to Paquita Hansberry and her absence for bringing Al Grimes, who many know is a part of the Fatherhood Initiative. Um, we had about 13 people, fathers there, and they're going to take the lead on this Father's Club. Um, we're hoping to get some additional grant money, thank you Chief Hansen, helping us to organize as a, um, a nonprofit to receive donations. So the plan is to, because we've got busy parents, a lot of our parents work more than one job, it's meeting every other month, but Al Grimes gracious is accepted to share with us the funds that he's had allocated for the county's Cowing Ride Fatherhood Initiative to really get our Father's Club off the ground. So just a great meeting, and to Diva Walker, uh, who brought us the idea of what, how the library could, uh, join us, thank you, and providing the refreshments. Um, Jamie Hadron, our Director of Human Services, talked about a food pantry. I volunteered at the food pantry last week, just to understand what the need is, to get close to what the need was. Um, and we had so many people, the line was just around the corner. A lot of these federal workers are, don't have a check right now, um, and we're coming to a food pantry for the very first time. Um, what I did notice was a lot of them didn't have bags. So we did get a grant from, um, I forget the organization that we got the bags from, but they need bags. Um, so, uh, I put a call out when I came, I stopped and see the seniors, and they said, you know, we'd like something besides powdered cream, powdered cream. And every time I put a call out, people show up. And so we have more, as you heard our director say, more flavored cream than you can imagine, which makes them quite happy. I am asking for the same, um, call out now for help, we need bags. They're carrying things in their hands, their children are carrying things, and some of them are walking to the pantry, um, but we, we do need bags, and so if we could donate, um, some bags to the food pantry as they're coming to gather that food. I want to thank Councilman Jones for agreeing to buy hats and gloves as it's getting cold. Uh, normally for Christmas, we will get candy canes or some extra to put in the bags for the parents for their children. Um, and one of the things I also know is they don't have hats and gloves, so Councilman Jones has agreed to buy some hats and gloves, so thank you. And in addition to the candy canes, we will put hats and gloves in those bags for our visitors to the food pantry. I am very disappointed to share, uh, many of you have followed the story, and we did have a consultant here, you've heard all the youth programs, and you've heard all the programs that we have through the library as a partnership. And one of the things I've been challenged for my years is, is mayor, in addition to this building belonging to the senior center, and this is paid by grant dollars and levies, we didn't have anything to do for the children. So two years ago, we did hire Brandon Beck to bring that programming. He's done a fantastic job in bringing, uh, the programming here to Maple Heights, but the other issue is what do we do outside? All of our, all of our playgrounds, of five of them, are in disrepair, so much so that we had an incident at a park where a young person came down the slide and was cut because the slide was just in disrepair. I just had our service director, before it gets cold, remove two non-functioning pieces of equipment at Ben Hough Park. But we applied for $550,000, um, to get playground equipment. We applied twice. For six years, we've been applying unsuccessfully in the capital budget, and they denied us every single time. Uh, we've also tried to get money for our pool. They did give us money for the spray grounds, and that's free, but we have not been able to get money for the pools, so we thought, at least let's get our playgrounds. We have great attendance, and every weekend at Stafford Park, every pavilion is rented, and people have family reunions, I've been to a wedding there, um, we've got music in a park there, and the kids just don't have playground equipment. And so we were hoping to hire a consultant, and that didn't happen, we weren't able to hire consultants. So myself, Brandon Beck, our youth program coordinator, and Paquita Hansberry sat down and wrote, uh, grant for the file department natural resources, reached our state rep and said, what can we do to increase our chances of getting grant funding to replace our parks? We did it to where just about every city around us has brand-new parks. The other issue is having The other issue is having adaptive parks, inclusive parks, children that have autism or sensory issue like my grandson, he has a sensory, so there has to be special playground equipment, so all kids can enjoy the park. And so we applied at the recommendation of our state rep, and we found out last week we did not get the grant. So again, for the sixth year in a row, we tried the capital way, we tried to do a lobbyist, and that wasn't approved, and so we did it on our own, and it was denied. So we are going to try again when the grant season opens up again in February, we will try for the capital grant funding again, we'll try again for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, so sadly, we're not able to update our playgrounds for the eighth year for our children. I do want to share some good news. You'll see that ordinance number twenty twenty-five ninety was an agreement to, was an ordinance to authorize a annual contract that we knew our senior engineer, Chagrin Valley Engineering. Chagrin Valley Engineering has been the engineering firm for Maple Heights for about twenty years. The previous mayor had initiated this engagement with Chagrin Valley, was one of the things that was a broker, wasn't going to fix it, they've done a fantastic job, so much so in this, the Cranes magazine, this is Cranes, October sixth, twenty twenty-five edition, and then what they did was they rated the top fifty businesses in the region, and our engineering firm, Chagrin Valley Engineering, was one of the firms that was featured. Fantastic. They are one of the best out of fifty-nine communities in Kahuna County. Chagrin Valley is the engineering firm for several of them, and so to have them in this magazine, I thought was fantastic. A quote that was really, really interesting, just to give you an indication of what they do, in twenty twenty-three, Chagrin Valley Engineering completed a five million dollar sanitary sewer project with the suburb of Pepper Pike. As a community's consulting engineer, the firm not only designed the improvement, but also helped secure outside funding to bring the project to completion. Helping clients access funding is often as important as engineering itself. When you see the city torn up, and you see all the infrastructure, we've probably in ten years over five hundred million dollars in infrastructure repair. You've heard our interfinance director talk about what's in the general fund, less than five million. It is over five hundred thousand dollars to pave a street, and so, or to, the city celebrated its centennial in two thousand fifteen, city was incorporated in nineteen fifteen, city's a hundred years old, so everything underneath is a hundred years old. And we are slowly repairing all of that, and we're able to do that without taking money out of our budget, because Chagrin Valley Engineering, in addition to providing these services, applies for the grants, and a lot of what we do is grant funding, and we're successful. I was trying to get this grant, hiring lobbyists, using, hoping to eventually use the services of the lobbyists to increase our chances, but Chagrin Valley has been a part of really half a billion dollars in bringing that, those kind of dollars to our city for infrastructure repair. And so I'm very happy to celebrate and see that they were recognized in this national business magazine, Cranes Engineering, as being one of the top engineering firms in this county. And I'd like to say, I've gone to the mocktails every year, Uglot usually beats us, I don't plan on Uglot beating, but we did win a couple times, it's important to, for us to just come out and cheer our team on, they come up with some really creative ideas at mocktails, and we want to be there to be their cheerleaders, as well as a shot with the cap. So we are ending this year on a high note with some successful programs, the city's torn up, because we are fixing everything that's been a hundred years old, new water lines, new gas lines, new streets, maybe not yet, because one of the things that Chagrin Valley does as a best practice is, we don't pave the street until everything is fixed under it. So there is a water line, a job scheduled, a gas line, sewer line, it has to wait until we fix it, and then it's repaid, and they pay for it, and then it doesn't come out of our budget. So that's a success we've had in some of the infrastructure repairs, you'll see that kind of go away a little bit this year as the weather changes. You did hear our planning and development director, I was at the polls yesterday, and someone came to me and said, I'm so disappointed, I never know when this your home maintenance grant is coming out, and I don't get it. We did forty-four, forty-one, we get fifty thousand dollars, we applied from the grant dollars, CDS funds, and these are casino revenue funds that come back to municipalities. We get fifty thousand from that grant, and then we match, the city matched up another fifty thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollar budget. And then we back it into how many residents we can get, twenty-five hundred, and so it's been forty-one and forty-four, it was about thirty-two, we changed it so we can get more. And so we're applying to get that money again, and as soon as it's available, we will make it available so people can apply to get those monies, as we try to give that money back. And then Citizen Serve, in addition to working with Chagrin Valley, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and all the places we look to get money to really relieve the burden on our budget, which is difficult. I received a report last week from the county treasurer, we have the second highest property tax delinquency, which is why our director talked about it, the city of Maple Heights is like a million dollars of property tax delinquents, eleven million dollars, we get sixteen percent of that, the rest goes schools, parks, and libraries, and one of the challenges, I have to find a way to collect some portion of that, as people don't aim at plans, but that's a big part of our budget. We were ten, eleven million dollars, but that affects our budget, and I'm very happy that Mr. Kenny is here, helping clean some things up, and so I can really know exactly where we are in terms of revenues that we can budget for next year with the facts, and really understanding what our challenges are and what we really can do. But we've asked for help from the county, and this is happening, not just in Maple Heights as we challenge this here, many cities do, and there's several initiatives to help regionalize and spread these challenges, financial challenges throughout the county. And Citizen Serve is a building software that most cities use in the county. We have an older system, and so because there's a twenty, almost thirty thousand dollars setup cost, they're going to pay for the first year. There's a grant for twenty-seven thousand two ninety-nine ninety-eight, so they'll pay to help us get on board, to get this set up. And then we will, we will create a relationship with the county, and our building department will then join the county's building department to save us a lot of money. Right now, we outsource this to SafeBuild, and SafeBuild gets seventy-two point five percent of any plan review, any work that they do, so we're not even going to keep that money in house. So looking at ways to save money is what we have to do, to really overcome when you have a huge deficit and uncollectible taxes like we have right now with property tax, and people just can't pay, and I certainly understand that. I do have some really good news, I got a call two weeks ago from the mayor of Shaker Heights, Mayor David Weiss, and he says, mayor, I have two analysis to give you. Many of you know, three years ago, City of Independence, Mayor Kurtz gave us two police vehicles, was it two? Gave us two vehicles. They know the challenges, and Mayor Weiss said as they were considering who could use these squads, and these squads, brand-new or over a hundred thousand dollars, they're giving them to Maple Heights. So Chief Siphon went to take a look at them, to see what condition they're in, and hopefully, I'm not sure if we're going to take both, one, or receive two, this saves us several hundred thousands of dollars. Was with him today, I know we're waiting for them to get their new squad so we can pick it up, but this is a partnership, we're regionalized, we strategize, and we try to do as much as we can to really just relieve the financial burden here, deal with the challenge that we have in shortfall. And I'm not sure what was going on when I came in, I heard a little bit, I was at a alumni meeting before I got here, but I definitely wanted to make it to this meeting, but I heard something about three to four minutes, say this and move on. I was called by several people, who said, can you please explain what we keep hearing at meetings? Because we only have four minutes, that wasn't me, we only have four minutes, and you keep saying it's a council meeting. Will you host a meeting and share with us what's going on? I hosted a meeting, addressing the concerns that people brought to my attention. Now I feel heard I was filmed, I'm being filmed tonight, but I don't have, that's okay. It was at a private location, I didn't tell anybody they couldn't come, and any question that was asked, I shared with documentation, so I'm not sure what was going on with the presentations. Additionally, because that's become a problem beginning the first of the year, the first meeting of every council meeting, I will be here, unless I'm out of town or have a challenge, at six o'clock, meeting in the front room, will have a pre-meeting for me to address any question you have about legislation, so I don't have to have a meeting after the fact to explain how I voted, what I said, what this legislation is. And with that, I end my report. Thank you, I will be at the veterans' day, honoring our veterans as they do, I thank them for their service, I thank them for keeping us safe, I thank them for the heroic acts and purge, and so I will be there on the eleventh, but those of you that can come out, please join me. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Turn it to the president's report. A couple of things here. One, you heard the mayor mention about applying for a grant for playground equipment, half a million dollars. And it strikes me that we can't get this money out of our legislation in Columbus, but they can give two hundred million dollars to a billionaire to go toward a stadium. And that's average people's money that they've been collecting there, and it just seems like, and I'm just going to use the word poor, just talk about normal people, they can take that money and give to a rich person for their benefit, and that bothers me. Other than that, the other thing, we had an election that, yesterday, going forward in twenty twenty-six, my prayer is that the people who are returning and the new people will make their decisions and vote on things for the city that would better been for the city. With that, that's all I have, turning to council's report, Councilwoman Dana Anderson, District Four.
Good evening, everyone. I won't leave before you long, I just wanted to say thank you to all the residents that voted for me, I appreciate all your support, and I congratulate my colleagues that won their reelection, and also I'm looking forward to a new era and a new season in twenty twenty-six, and once again, I just want to say thank you all so much for your support and your votes. And with that being said, I'm just gonna refer the rest of my time over to my colleague, Councilwoman Tina Stowson-Marbury. What did I say, councilman? Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
It happens sometimes, I know.
I'm just going to get right back into it, I'm not going to give you the minutes, but I do have the minutes in which all these meetings were made, it was also stated that we were without a council clerk for six months. That also is not true, our council clerk told us in December that she was leaving. We questioned the council president several times to say, when are we going to do something about getting a new council clerk? And that's what took that time, not because, and yeah, we didn't just choose the first person that was presented to us, but we didn't start looking for a council clerk, which was not up to us, that was up to council president, because that was his decision, when we would start, and so we didn't start until many months later. In addition to that, it was talked about how many chances we get as council to look at the information and vote on the floor, that our meeting should only be an hour, hour and a half, and that we get our information on Friday, that is true, we get our information on Friday. It was stated that we have Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, committee of the whole, which is on Monday, and then the caucus on Wednesday. Who are you calling on Saturday and Sunday of business to ask them any question about what you might need to be researching? So we don't have all day Saturday and Sunday, we get it late on Friday, which is okay, that's what the council clerk has been getting to us, so that's the norm, but we don't have all day Saturday and Sunday to do that. We just did not have our committee of the whole on Monday before this meeting, so there, sometimes that meeting is canceled, so we didn't get to have that Monday to do any research and whatnot. It was told that we don't read the information, and that's why we're not prepared, and that's why we're asking questions on the floor, but if you just realize, my council colleagues were asking questions about the same legislation that they got on Friday night, I did, but they had questions today, and why is that okay? So that was, you know, something else. It was also stated that when the mayor gets her information, she reads it, she gives it to the law director, he goes through it, she gives it to the chief, and he goes through it, but we don't get those opportunities, and that doesn't happen in just a weekend of three or four days, so, you know, you work on things, and then you bring it to us, and you make sure it's complete before you bring it to us, so I think it's only fair that we have an opportunity to look and research things and not be ridiculed for having to do that, and then just vote on something without having done our due diligence. It was also talked about the food pantry, and how my council colleague took over the food pantry, she can address that issue, but that was a COVID thing, she can handle that. It talked about the government affairs committee, and how the government affairs committee was trying to just take over, and how we are part-time, but we're trying to govern or boss full-time people, that's not what that legislation was about, and we talked about that on the floor. All of these negative things that's being talked about and told to you all like we're the bad guys, we are doing our jobs, when in fact, we absolutely are. The government affairs is not to take over. It also talked about council, let's see, yeah, let's figure it out from six to five, that there's thirty developers coming, there's a developer coming in to build thirty homes, we don't know anything about that, why does some council members know about things that's going on and others don't? That's not, but we're told it's a secret, I can't say anything yet, but yes, some council members know that, I had never heard that, there was a developer coming to build thirty homes, and so they, and that they probably don't want to come here because they hear the rumble. The YouTube was talked about, it was said that there was no meetings had, and there was nothing talked about a budget, and there was, that's not true, there were meetings and council president was there, and he got documentation, that's Councilwoman Anderson talked about that. It was asked, how much money does each committee get? Councilwoman Jones said, there's four thousand dollars, committees don't get four thousand dollars, committees get fifteen hundred dollars. So that's putting these things in the residents' head continues the divisiveness, because you all are thinking one thing, and that's not what it is, and council doesn't say anything, but I feel like we need to start talking about that. It was told that it slipped out that cameras had to be purchased, and laptops had to be purchased, that was talked about in the meeting. It was also said that it was ordered incorrectly, I'm not sure if that meant the finance person ordered it incorrectly, or who it was, but it was told since it was ordered incorrectly, the chief took a laptop and a camera. That's council money, so should it not have been returned, and you all were talking about how we're going to be behind and not have our budget, we're going to be, not have money, and we're going to have to ask for it from the general fund? That is not correct. Council has a budget, there's line items that we don't use. We, when I sat down with the finance director, all right, with the finance committee and the finance director, for years, we've been giving money back, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars that council didn't use because council didn't know about that money, because council didn't have anything to do with the budget. It was the council clerk and the council president. Now, council puts in, or had, can weigh in on what the budget is, and what it's used for, and the different line items, so that is fair, so that we know what's going on. If you all remember, I stood before here at this podium and stated how the council president spent twenty-five or twenty-four, whatever it was, hundred dollars, and never told council about it, he said he had that right, because it was for the swearing-in, it was for the cause, but the point was, they talked to us about it, and now we're asking questions, it's a problem. They talked about in that meeting how campaign, campaign person for my colleagues was paid to do a DJ thing. We don't ask about, and she's also DJed for other city events, now how it was paid, I don't know, but she's done things in the city. Now, how it was paid, I don't know, but she's done things in the city. But when they do it for council, it's an issue. It also says that the videographer just came in and started taping. That's not true. That's not true. He had a whole conversation. They didn't come to the meeting. They said they weren't invited. That's not true. Any of my colleagues can come to any committee meeting. Any of you all can come to any committee meeting. It's a public meeting. So these are untruths yet again. Then, we talked about, they talked about, there was a blanket PO for $3,000, just a blank PO that council could use. It talked about the laptops, the cameras. It talked about, we were supposed to get three beers. We, she looked at the three people. She can explain that. That's for her to talk about. But all the things that they're saying is not true. These are things that were being done, and I'm saying this on the floor, so we're all here together. It's all on video. I can pull it up. Can't say you didn't say it because the resident taped it. Also, they talked about the, the person didn't have a service agreement. She can talk about that as well. She did what she was told to do. She sat down. We didn't just do things because she wanted to. There was questions that were asked. It said that our account is gonna be short. Council president said he got 15 questions. I'm not sure who he asked those questions of. He said a lot of them have been answered. Some of them have not. Said we're gonna, council is gonna be without money at the end of the year. And it's gonna be asked. We're gonna have to ask the general fund, and the mayor's not gonna give it to us. Council, there is a thing called appropriations. You reallocate money. That's what you do in a budget. You didn't spend it over here, but you use it over here. If it's for, if it's within that council budget, then you can move that money around. They didn't say that. They just said they're not gonna have any money. That's not true. Also, there was a lot of information talked about being recalled and who can be recalled. We can all be recalled, but you're doing your job. They talked about Trumpet Tree and how it was poorly attended. That's not true. But even if it was two children there, it was for the kids, and that should have been okay. It was stated that there was $4,000 spent for candy. That's not true. There's receipts. Council president wrote an email and said, is that all the candy? Well, let me say his words. After seeing the candy this morning, will any additional candy be provided? But you're making about what was spent. How does that make sense? But you're making about council. You see, you're making about they're doing wrong. Then you have, we just talked about recalls. A colleague talked about council wanting to jump on our colleague here. That's not true, but she can address that for, I'm sorry, I'm talking. That is true. My colleague said the mayor writes 95% of the legislation. That is true. But then you turn around and say, but the legislation that council write is against what she's writing. Show me one. Tell me about it. If you think about it, the legislation that the mayor writes, if we were against the mayor, y'all talking about, oh, this one that she's done, someone, we approve those things. Let's think about that. How many things do we say no to? We do. We do. But all this great work that's being done is because council approves the legislation. My councilman, my colleague said they just want to be fair. That's not true. I want no part of that seat at all. I'm where I want to be. But they want to put words in your mouth. That's not true. We actually told Councilwoman Anderson to run, and that's not true. So there are so many untruths I want to point out, these things that were said and documented, because I'm only gonna talk about what I can prove. And it's gotta stop. It's gotta stop. You talked about how much budget the mayor had, and she only spent this amount of money. You can spend money on other departments. You don't have to just spend it out of your department. We talked about 220 rules, stripping the council president of his checks and balance. We changed 220 rules to make things fair across the board for all council members. We have council, we talked about the finance director and how we didn't want to hire the finance director. You don't, we don't hire just the first person. We was trying to get a part-time finance director when we were in fiscal emergency. And they held out, and we got a wonderful committee to help. So my colleague said he don't even know how to do anybody, and he can't balance his own checkbook. So you, but you fussing about the decision that's being made by others that are qualified to do it. There are, you talked about the finance director and how she said if Maple Heights was giving her this amount of money, she would, if we didn't give it to her, she was leaving. That's not true. We sent a finance meeting, and she said she was good. Council's given that. So again, there are so many things. It was get the seats, get the seats, so that we can overturn everything that they've done. That was it. So I want you all to understand what truly is going on here. No one wants to be the mayor. I don't. We're not fighting against the mayor. That's why most of the legislation is approved. But come 2026, we gotta stop all of this back scratching, lying. It's ridiculous, because you want your way. Because you want people to do what you want them to do. That's not how it's supposed to work. We're supposed to do things for you. And regardless of how you might feel about, you know, certain things, it's about you. When we, you all talked about this fence and how we denied this fence. We have a resident that constantly gives false information. Even because she don't know, won't listen, I don't know. But you're not in wrong. Don't say we didn't invite the mayor to the meeting. It was the mayor's meeting. Says so right here. She called the meeting. But you're saying, Mr. Fuhr, that we should have asked her if she was available, and she should have been invited to the meeting, and we're just trying to take over. No, she called the meeting. Please stop giving this information. Do your research. Do your homework. Ask some questions. I could have given you this if you had asked me. Don't just listen to what somebody tells you. Don't be like the rest of, don't jump off the cliff because everybody else is jumping. Stop and look. See how deep it is before you leave. So I thank you for your time. I'm hoping that in 2026, there's so much more that was said in here that was wise, but I'm gonna just give y'all that. Because that's enough to show you that somebody's gonna tell you the truth. So if you have questions about what I said, if you want to hear something else, ask me. I keep telling y'all, every meeting, talk to me. I will tell you what you need to know. If you can come to me respectfully and intelligently, I will talk to you the same. So with that, I will say thank you so much.
Councilwoman Tansley-Mann, District Four.
Good evening, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. I mean, we've been here, it's almost nine o'clock. No, I know.
So I'm gonna assume Councilwoman Stanford-Marbury, it was your time, because she gave you your time and you spoke. So do you still want what was listed on here though?
My district knows where I am. I'm not the go for everybody who's talking. Don't call me.
Councilwoman Ebeneezer, District Seven.
Good evening. I would like to thank all of my residents that voted for me, the ones that were against me and put all that negative information on about Councilwoman Ebeneezer. It was 66% who stood strong for Councilwoman Ebeneezer, and I wanted to thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Councilwoman Stafford, Senate District One.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank my residents and constituents for allowing me to represent them for another term. Maple Heights District One. I'd also like to congratulate my colleagues who have won for reelection. Like to congratulate Councilwoman Ebeneezer. Like to congratulate Councilwoman Dana Anderson, who will be our next council president. Also like to congratulate our new council member who will be coming in soon, Ms. Shirley Merritt. I'd say I would have one report for District One. I did have a meeting with residents from Shriver Road. I'd like to thank the Public Works and Safety Committee for hosting that meeting. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Dana Anderson, who was with me at that meeting. Councilman Tim Tatum had another game, he was excused and couldn't make that particular meeting. We just discussed traffic on Shriver Road. I want to thank the representatives from CBE Engineering, who explained why we don't have center lines going down Shriver Road. Unfortunately, the street is too narrow for center lines. If they would put center lines there, people would be riding on the tree lines to stay in the lane. So they are going to be looking at funds from the county, because that is a county route in hopes of why they need that road. So again, I want to thank the representatives from CBE. Also want to thank our service director, Tony and Nick, our assistant service director, who attended that meeting as well and was able to provide valuable information to the residents on Shriver Road. That being said, I want to wish everybody a blessed evening. Thank you for coming out and the report.
Thank you. Then going to Councilwoman Tony Jones, District Two.
Good evening, everybody. The remaining funds that I have from the $1,000 District Two expenditures, I think I had a balance of close to $200. It was spent to purchase 100 sets of hats and gloves that will be at the Maple Heights Food Pantry the week before Thanksgiving for distribution. We also spoke about the exterior home maintenance grant. If you're interested in applying, my suggestion would be to get your estimates and see if, because I think you have to supply three estimates for the grant, see if the contractors will hold their pricing into next year so that you would be one step ahead of people that are trying to apply so you already have an idea of what the cost is. The grant goes up to $2,500. Your expenditure might be a little bit over that, depending on what type of repair you're doing. And you also need to make sure that you have the balance that's available. In response to Councilwoman Stafford-Marbury, the meetings that were held were open meetings. Everybody was invited. And you saw whatever was on the video. You can take what you want out of context, but I stand firm in whatever was said.
Councilman Tim Tatum, District Three.
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Service Department for coming. Kind of some things that was needed to be taken care of. Also, I'd like to congratulate my colleagues as well as Councilwoman-elect Shirley Merritt, who's gonna be coming in the first of the year. And for myself, I ran unopposed, and it didn't really cost me any money. And I know they spent tons of money, so I'm hoping they can group those funds and we can get together and do a great job. Also, on November 25th, I'm having bowling, also November 25th. November 25th, I'm sponsoring a bowling party for the Union Southfield Lanes. And December 5th, we have our senior Christmas party. In regards to what Councilwoman Marbury is talking about, I have a lot of meetings. And I'm not gonna say anything that I can't repeat, but I'm not gonna go back and forth with anybody in regards to what was said, who said this, who said that. If you want to know what I said, come to one of my meetings, because it opened to the public and everybody was invited. So if you hear something, go hear it again. You know, because I'm not gonna keep repeating myself going back and forth as to what was said. So y'all have a blessed week. And like I said, I'm gonna refer the rest of my time to our council president, Ryan Jackson.
Thank you. If, talking about going back and forth, I mean, who? Who is, who is just gonna be the one to say it's enough is enough? Because we can't keep going back and forth over and over again. But there were some statements that was just made, and again, when one person...
Council President.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I don't think it's fair. You had your time. Now, Councilman Tatum was the last person. It's time to go. I mean, because that's not fair for you to make a statement and nobody else at the table can make a statement.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken, Councilwoman Anderson gave her time to Councilwoman...
But Councilwoman...
Can I finish, Karen? Thank you. She gave her time, and she was the first. This isn't the first time that somebody's given council time to another person. Now, when it's me, I would say, no, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be able to do it. Yeah, probably. Ain't got no home trainer. Yeah, I said that. So, yeah, so who's gonna be the one to say, I'm just gonna let that go and not gonna say anything to, to show the short side of that? So I'm just gonna, I wrote down so many, but I just want to hit a color. To kind of give you kind of the same. Who's talking about the Christmas candy? We got an email that said the candy was in Room Seven.
Trumpet Tree.
I'm sorry, Trumpet Tree. So I went to Room Seven, and there was a couple of things in there. So I sent an email and said, was that it? After that, more candy was in the room. More candy was delivered. So to make this sound like, I don't know what that was. But that's why that email was written, because there was only a couple of boxes in there. But we ended up with a whole lot more, but there was a gap in between where that email was. But it comes to the finance director. Finance director works for the mayor. Council has to approve it. But wouldn't you give the mayor the finance director that the mayor wants to work the finances for the city? And then the big one was the council clerk and how many months it took. You know, I couldn't get people to even meet to talk about the council clerk once a month. So at one point in there, we got 85 applications, I think.
The council opinion, the council meeting, there's a point of order, please. Frank, can I get a legal? We have 220 rules in order of our agenda. We were at the point of need that the council president would adjourn. It's upon what we voted on in the 220 rules in order of our meeting.
Yes, so I'm not sure where this, this consultation started, or it started tonight. None of you have an allotted amount of time for your reports. So there is, it is wrong to say you're giving your time to somebody else. There is no time to give, period. So I don't know where that started tonight. But yeah, Council President, I would say that if there was no time given to you to say, Councilwoman Anderson, wouldn't you give any time to Councilwoman Marbury? But you, you need to wrap yourself, because you are in violation of the...
So I will have, I don't think I will just ask. Then at no time can anybody give any of their time to another person.
Again, there is... Again, there is no such thing. None of you have time to give. You each have your place where you give your report, period.
Well, okay, yeah, this isn't the first time this happened, but I got you. And I'll comply with your, with your, with your directions. At this time, we're gonna end this council meeting at, but again, if you wanna, we're gonna end this council meeting at 8:58.